Good evening, welcome. Pam, would you please note that we have Quorum, Dr. Graham is present, myself, Ms. Robles, Mr. Uxer, Ms. Solis is out of town, Judge Hagerty and Ms. Nahida will be here a few minutes late. Item 1.4, approval minutes, April 24th, 2018, regular meeting, May 23rd, 2018, June 29th, 2018, regular meeting.
Second.
Pam, we're ready?
Mrs. Robles?
Aye.
Mr. Uxer?
Aye.
Dr. Graham?
Aye, but I abstain from the May 23rd because I wasn't here.
Item 1.4, approval minutes, April 24th, 2018, regular meeting, May 23rd, 2018, June 29th, 2018, regular meeting.
Second.
Pam, we're ready?
Mrs. Robles?
Aye.
Mr. Uxer?
Aye.
Dr. Graham?
Aye, but I abstain from the May 23rd because I wasn't here.
Mr. Fierro?
Aye. Open forum, item 1.6, is anyone here to speak under open forum? No, going once, twice, okay, Pam, please?
Item 1.7, presentations by individuals, groups and organizations. Item 1.7.1, Dr. Sarata, college president, will recognize individuals who have retired from the college district.
Chair Fierro, members of the board, this is, at this time of the year, it's always somewhat bittersweet with regards to losing great folks at the institution. I'm going to ask Dr. Barbara Yancey Tooks to come up first. Dr. Yancey Tooks? Dr. Yancey Tooks was employed as a speech professor and coordinator at the Northwest Campus for 14 years. Prior to serving others in higher education as a professor and coordinator for the Speech Communications Discipline at the El Paso Community College Northwest Campus, Dr. Barbara Yancey Tooks retired honorably as a sergeant major, United States Army, with 21 years of service. Dr. Yancey Tooks applied her detailed oriented expertise to coaching and mentoring others while taking care of the needs of students in the classroom. During her tenure, Dr. Yancey Tooks obtained her doctorate in management with an emphasis in organizational leadership from the University of Phoenix School of Advanced Studies. She received the NISOD Excellence Award in 2014 and is a founding member of the El Paso Community College Teachership Academy. Dr. Yancey Tooks certification include effective college instruction awarded by the Association of College and University Educators and the American Council on Education, ACU is the acronym. In her spare time, Barbara, I prefer Dr. Yancey Tooks, enjoys playing the game of Scrabble with her daughter. We cannot thank you enough, Dr. Yancey Tooks, for your dedicated service to our institution and to our nation. Thank you so much for all that you've done.
Dr. Sarata, distinguished members of the Board of Trustees, El Paso Community College. I am truly humbled, honored and blessed that you have acknowledged the contribution that I was able to make like so many other fine people to this institution. I have one parting request, that as a United States Army disabled veteran myself and a soldier, with all of the edifices that we have going on the construction for new buildings at all of our campuses, I would like to make a special request that somewhere that we remember and acknowledge another soldier, veteran, Ms. Charisma James, for her work and dedication in bringing our awareness for veterans at each one of our campuses. Thank you so much, I do appreciate it and thank you for listening.
Thank you.
If Ms. Isela Solis would join me at the podium as well. Thank you. It is a great honor to recognize Mrs. Isela Solis for her 31 years of service to El Paso Community College. Mrs. Solis began her journey at EPCC while working for a year and a half at the testing center. In September of 1987, she began her career as an EPCC full-time employee for the Financial Aid Office. Throughout the years, Mrs. Solis progressed to the position of Financial Aid Loan Officer in which she provided 15 years of service. Mrs. Solis has many attributes, she is very resourceful and goes over and above what is required of her duties to resolve problems and issues that affect our students and their families. This accelerated her career to become a financial aid specialist, a position she has held up until this day. She often mentions that her commitment to serve students and families were some of her greatest accomplishments while working at EPCC. On many occasions, the real grandest students come back looking for her because of the humble and outstanding service that she provides. With over 31 years of job knowledge, she has had the capability and experience of being able to keep up with the yearly changing regulations, and they change often, from the US Department of Education. This has proven her outstanding working ethics. Mrs. Solis certainly represented EPCC and the community through her quality of work and total commitment to student success. Upon her retirement, Mrs. Solis plans on spending time with her family and her granddaughter, Chloe. With most sincere gratitude, we thank Mrs. Solis for her honesty, hard work and devotion to the Financial Aid Office and the students that she has served. The Financial Aid Office wishes her the best retirement and in this, her next chapter of life. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I want to thank El Paso Community College for all the good years that I have served them with great pleasure. I enjoy working with students and the parents and I thank for all the experience and knowledge that I accomplished by working for EPCC. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Last and certainly not least, Mr. Gary Chacon. Gary Chacon. Gary Chacon is the Executive Director for ERP Support Services, is retiring from EPCC after 31 years, he started as a little boy, of working in the area of information technology. He began working at the college as a night shift computer operator in 1981. This was way before the Internet and when registration was being processed through punch cards and backups were on reel-to-reel tapes. In January 1988, Gary became a programmer analyst supporting the state reporting, accounts receivable and general accounting using COBOL as a primary programming language. The IT leadership team kids Gary that he's the only one still that talks about COBOL. Gary went on to become an information technology manager and was part of the team that moved the HP computer mainframe units, high-speed printers and disk drive units to the new ASC Computer Operations Center. Gary has served as the manager of technical support operations, manager of IT systems applications, executive director of IT systems application and most recently as the executive director of ERP Support Services. He has worked on the conversion of Banner 7 to Banner 8, implementation of College Schedular, assisted with the AdAstra implementation and to refresh, pardon me, all the student labs with new desktops. He has worked closely with Student Services to assist with registration and financial aid and the finance area to assist with budget rollouts and other projects. He has also provided banner technical support to Human Resources for the Affordable Care Act and assisted with other state reporting requirements. Throughout the many years in IT, Gary participated in various initiatives such as Texas Complete and Achieving the Dream, which is where I first met Mr. Chacon. He has also been a member of the Texas Connection Consortium Leadership Council. His plans for retirement is to spend more time with his wife, his two sons, and he wants to travel. He has a passion for playing music and recently started playing with a Steely Dan tribute band. This is the opening band for other out-of-town tribute groups from the 70s and 80s, the best music that exists from my opinion. Gary is looking forward to doing more of this and working with music recording. Mr. Chacon, on behalf of the college and the IT Division, we thank you for your 31 years of service and wish you well as you begin your new journey into retirement and on your way to the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame. But thank you so much for your service.
Well, 31 years went by like a blink of an eye. I hope that next 31 don't go so fast and they're a lot slower so I can enjoy it. But I've had a lot of great times, a lot of great memories here at the college, working with some great people, so I know I'll miss some of those moments. And like I was telling Jenny, you know, I'm going to be thinking about you guys, not all the time, but I'll think about you once in a while, just, I know you have a lot of work ahead of you and I appreciate all the efforts and leadership from Dr. Hiron and I know I've worked with several folks from the cabinet, I mean, not the cabinet, but who are you, VPs, there you go. So I've had some great times and it's time for me to move on. I want to spend some time with my family and enjoy my time while I still can, so, all right, thank you so much, appreciate it.
I hope all these retirees will become members of our Retiree Association and continue being part of the EPCC family.
Very good point, Dr. Graham, thank you. Dr. Pena, your items next. Pam, would you please note, item 1.7.2 will be postponed till next meeting?
Item 1.7.3, Dr. Andrew Pena, Executive Director for Human Resources, will present an update on the implementation of the NeoGov applicant tracking system.
We're just waiting for the presentation to be up on the screen. Okay, thank you. Dr. Sarata, Chair Fierro, esteemed board members, vice presidents, good evening and guests that are in the audience. It was about a year ago when I first had the opportunity to meet with you and speak with you about opportunities and challenges that we HR department faced in attracting applicants and riding them through the hiring process. And as I mentioned to you when I concluded my presentation, that we will come up with a system that we believe is one that we can move forward with for the next five to seven years and even longer. So all of you should have a copy of the PowerPoint presentation, I think you should also have it electronically, so if I may, I'd like to proceed with the presentation. The first thing we did after we got the approval from your body was to begin the process of the request for proposals. So the item that was approved in August immediately went to RFP in October of 2017 in the El Paso Times. So as soon as we got the message to proceed with trying to secure another applicant tracking system, we were on it right away. So two months later, a month and a half later, we got with the purchasing department and proceeded the RFP process where we had deadlines that were in mid, early November. Now, one of the things we wanted to do was, in our evaluation committee, was to invite members of the community, which were the representing presidents of the various entities, which is the Classified Staff, Professional Staff and Faculty Association, along with representatives from HR, Finance and IT, to serve in the committee, because it was important for us to get their input and allow them to go back to their respective bodies and solicit questions and responses on what type of system they felt we needed at EPCC. So we had eight members in our committee and we met in December, and because of the winter break, we were somewhat crunched with time, so we tried to expedite the process as quickly as we could. And the committee came up with four finalists, okay, four finalists that we could present in terms of presentations. Now of the four finalists, one, two of them elected to excuse themselves, one of them due to scheduling conflicts and we left us with two finalists. So in January, the process became where we had in-house evaluations where we had two companies present their product and their services to our evaluation committee. And then soon after, we selected the system that provided the best value to the college and that system was NeoGov. Now, as soon as, as soon as we were able to identify the successful vendor, this body approved the requisition for the expense in January, so early in the year, you as the board approved the expenditure for NeoGov. Three weeks later, we started the training with the HR team and we also extended invitations to the information technology team to get the ball rolling. So from early or mid February through June, the HR team spent two hours a day evaluating, testing the system to ensure that it met our needs and the quality of the applicants as well as the hiring officials that we serve. Now with any sort of, with systems, any type of limitations, there's always going to be hiccups and ours was not unique to any sort of hiccups. Our intended plan was to go live on July 2nd, which was a month before what we committed to you back in August of 2017. But due to the hard work of the HR team, the information technology team, we just extended our go-live date by a week, so we actually went live on July 9th. And as I mentioned, some of the technical issues we dealt with is that we had two different web addresses that we had to address and channel our applicants to go to the right one versus the People Admin one, which we would eventually vacate. But all of that has, all of that has worked well. We have, at this point, about 15 positions that we have posted. We have had positive feedback from our hiring officials. We haven't had any responses or comments from applicants, but I can assure you that once we do, we will, we will ensure that these situations and problems are addressed immediately so they don't extend. So, Mr. Fierro, President Sarata, board members, we feel very comfortable moving forward with NeoGov. Of course, we're only a month into the system, but we hope that the next year and the years to come are a positive and fruitful one for not only the applicants who apply to the college, but as well as the hiring officials who are involved in it.
Ms. Pena, do you think in the one month that you've had to work with it, do you think it will resolve the issue that the board had in particular with our previous software?
Chair Fierro, those were some of the questions and comments we made to the vendor, so they were certainly aware of some of the things we were looking for. Will we be able to tell after a month? Probably not, but I think as we go, as we start to expand the number of positions we have posted, that'll give us a good indication. But on the occasions that we got from the successful vendor is that those problems would have been, will be resolved.
Any other questions, Dr. Graham?
I just have a question, so are we still running two parallel systems or?
Well, we're, yes ma'am, we're running, we're running a parallel system with People Admin because our performance evaluation modules are still with performance with People Admin. The applicant tracking system is primarily fed through NeoGov and our plan, and last month, you approved an extension, and the reason that the extension was to allow us to complete the performance eval process for 2017. But all of the new positions, we have advised our hiring officials to use the new system of NeoGov.
So they're not going to be merging, you're going to stay just with the one?
Yes, yes ma'am, that's the eventual goal. And let me mention, NeoGov, not only will they be managing our applicant tracking system, but as well as our onboarding system, which we are currently in the process of training, and then in 2019, we'll launch the performance evaluation piece. So at that point, NeoGov would be our sole enterprise for applicant tracking, onboarding and performance evals.
Are there other colleges that are using it?
There are, there's, there's a few, we know the city and the county of El Paso are using NeoGov and have been on NeoGov for many years.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Any other questions? Dr. Pena, thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Item 1.7.4, optional presentations will be made by the presidents of the Classified Staff Association, the Professional Staff Association, Faculty Association and the Student Government Association.
Good evening.
Good evening, Board President Fierro, Board Members, Dr. Sarata and attendees. First and foremost, we would like to thank Dr. Sarata and the administrative team on proposing our 3% salary enhancement for our fiscal year 2019, additionally to the board for their approval of this item during last month's board meeting. We are in the process of finalizing our PSA election for 2019 academic year. The new officers will be presented to you at the September board meeting. It has been a pleasure to serve our PSA membership, work with the administrators to meet with the college's missions and goals, assist staffs strive for a better working condition, better working environment and embrace our students so they may experience an excellent academic scholastic environment. A special thanks to the PSA liaison dean Rick Webb for his patience and guidance. Our PSA officers vacating their positions for this year are Emma Hernandez Treasurer, Grace Eribe's Vice President, Michelle Chavez Secretary. Although we are still employees of the college, we will continue to be involved in various PSA committee meetings, events, college events promote our PSA activities. Additionally, I would like to thank a number of PSA chairpersons, Mari Reyes, Martha Arvizo, Lori Hoffner and Mary Olgin Chavez. I thank you for your consideration and mostly for your support during my term as PSA president. Thank you.
Thank you so much, congratulations.
Good evening. I would like to echo the sentiment of my other associations in saying thank you for the salary enhancement. We understand that at this day and time, funding for higher ed is a very complex formula and decision. And we also anticipate that probably the decision to increase our salary meant sacrifices elsewhere, and so we want to say thank you for choosing to make us a priority in that. We ask that you would continue to have that as a consideration in the future because continuing to retain and attract high-quality faculty does depend on maintaining a certain economic reality. And so we do appreciate your action at the previous board meeting and the administration's work to make that available to us. Tonight, however, I want to address my comments at a most unlikely area and that is parking. And let me say on the outset, Dr. Sarata, Mr. Smith and Mr. Lobato have spent a great deal of time with faculty. We know we're being heard, particularly Dr. Sarata listened to faculty yesterday at the adjunct forum, he listened to faculty today. My understanding is Mr. Smith is even tonight speaking at RG and they will be available on our campuses next week. We know you're hearing us. We did, however, want to make sure that we put all of our conversations and threads into a single message that I was asked to present to you tonight, and that is the faculty are deeply concerned that with the dual problems of increased costs with decreased access is going to present problems within the next year. For one, in order for us to have this increase of revenue to be able to provide increased security measures, we need people to be able to buy the parking permit. And for an employee, that seems intuitive that we should have that access, but that's not always the case, especially when we're talking about adjunct faculty that may be living on very meager budgets. I know $15 does not sound like a lot of money, but to quote Dr. Albert Burnham, "It is a 60% increase over what we have been previously paying." And that's for an employee who is paid to come here, but when we start talking about a student who is paying to come here, a 60% increase becomes a major choice. Just last semester, I had a student who came to me and asked what I recommended they do, should they purchase my textbook or should they buy a parking permit? I don't know how to answer that question. No, you don't need the textbook or no, you don't need a parking permit? That's, that's a zero-sum game choice. And now we've made it 60% more expensive for a student to make that decision. So we asked that there would be additional thought and consideration into perhaps having an intervention or remediation particularly for people who cannot economically afford the parking permit. Now in addition to that, we do have access, and I know everybody's been hearing about parking at RG and Mr. Lobato very kindly was helping me understand numbers in terms of total parking places lost. However, I would like to stress that while the quantitative impact of parking may not entirely be impactive, the quality of parking has been impacted. People do have to park further away, in some cases walking uphill all the way across campus or in the case of RG, they have to cross Mesa Street. And for someone who is able-bodied, that is one obstacle, but not all of us have that luxury. And even those of us who are able-bodied, it's one thing when we're looking at doing that at 10 o'clock in the morning, but it's a whole other thing 10 o'clock at night or when it's 100 degrees outside or when the wind is blowing 50 miles an hour. I will, in my experience, already have students I will, in my experience, already have students tell me during inclement weather that they're not worried that they won't be able to access campus because they have to park more further away and walk in the rain or the wind or whatever, and now we're asking people to park additionally distant. So while we understand that everybody is working the problem, I would like to ask a very particular and specific assistance, and that is to start a shuttle service at RG, at least until we get the additional parking available. Maybe over just this next semester, maybe over the next, just the couple weeks, definitely just during prime time, and for people who either have mobility issues or students specifically. So that way, the challenge that students find on their first day of school is the rigor in the classroom, not trying to find a parking space so that they can get to the classroom. Thank you very, very much for your time and consideration.
Dr. Serrata, will you and your team research the shuttle?
Absolutely.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Item 1.8, communications, none. Item 1.9, Board of Trustees, business, none. Item 1.10, Board Reports. Item 1.10.1, Treasurer's Report, July 31st, 2018, no action is necessary. Item 1.10.2, President's Report. Item 1.10.2.1, Dr. Serrata will update the Board of Trustees and audience on recent events that have transpired at the college.
Chair Fierro, members of the board, always a pleasure to report on, on some of the great things that are happening at the institution. On August 3rd, 2018, during the Texas Association of Community Colleges Annual Conference in Corpus Christi, Mr. Steve Smith, who serves as our Vice President for Instruction and Workforce Education, was presented the 2018 Carl M. Cheesy Nelson Administrative Leadership Award. Vice President Smith has consistently been a driving force behind our institution's efforts to provide excellent education and support services to our students. His outstanding leadership has resulted in measurable results. Mr. Smith was selected for this competitive award out of a, out of nominees submitted from all 50 community colleges across Texas. Jacob Friday, TAC President and CEO, said that the award celebrates exemplary commitment to Texas students, leadership, professional decorum, collaboration, and community engagement. He is at the Rio Grande Campus this evening, but congratulations to Vice President Smith on this exceptional recognition for the work that you do at EPCC. The Association of Community College Trustees, ACCT, announced on August 16th, 2018, that Dr. Maria Alvarez, professor and coordinator of biology, has been selected and has received the 2018 Western Regional Faculty Member Award. Dr. Alvarez will compete with the other regional winners for the national award during the Annual Congress of ACCT, October 24th through the 27th, 2018, in New York City. Congratulations, Dr. Alvarez, on the outstanding recognition for your work that you do with our students. Faculty Development Week is taking place throughout the college district as we prepare to kick off the fall semester with classes beginning on Monday, August 27th. In order to accommodate our students, special registration hours will be available on Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez, and your team, as well as the teams from the other divisions at the Valle Verde Campus to provide students with an additional opportunity to get registered for classes before Monday. Please join me for the groundbreaking of our new facilities at the Northwest Campus, Room L114, the library multipurpose room, on Thursday, August 30th, at 10:00 a.m. This will be our final groundbreaking. That's six different events, or five, because we did Valle Verde this together, at each of our five campuses as part of the master plan project. Staff Professional Development Day will be held on Thursday, September 13th. As always, the Board of Trustees is invited. And finally, the foundation will host the Third Annual Fajitas and Margaritas for Scholarships on Thursday, September 27th, in the B Building. Tickets are currently on sale at all campus cashier's offices. That concludes my report, Chair.
Thank you again, Dr. Serrata.
Item 1.11, Consent Docket, includes item 3.2.
Move to approve.
Second.
Questions? Pam, we're ready?
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Mr. Uxser.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahara.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Fierro.
Aye.
Item 2.0, Administration, None. Item 3.1, Full-Time Institutionally Funded Actions.
Move to approve.
Second.
Questions? Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Mr. Uxser.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahara.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Fierro.
Aye.
Item 3.3, Appointment of New Tenured Faculty, Reappointment of Continuing Probationary Faculty, and Authorization for the President to Enter Into Written Employment Contracts and Contract Addenda for the 2018-2019 Academic Year with Tenured and Probationary Faculty Members.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any questions? Pam, we're ready?
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Mr. Uxser.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahara.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Fierro.
Aye.
Item 3.4, Reappointment of Continuing Regular Classified Staff, Professional Support, and Administrative Staff, and Authorization for the President to Enter Into Written Employment Contracts and Contract Addenda effective September 1, 2018, with the employees listed.
Move to approve 3.4 or 3.5?
Second.
Item 3.5, Authorization for the President to Employ Part-Time Faculty and Staff for the 2018-2019 Fiscal Year. Is there any questions?
I just have a question on page 83. Kind of towards the middle of the page, we have an individual twice. Is that two different contracts, or? It's about the 10th from the top down.
Oh, I see it. Do you see it, Ms. Shaughnessy?
Peace Officer and Maintenance Worker.
Yeah, Peace Officer and Maintenance Worker 1. Dr. Graham, I do not know. I will follow up to see and amend that accordingly. I do see it's listed as the same person as a Maintenance Worker and as a Peace Officer 1.
Pam, would you please note that that motion is with clarification on that, on Dr. Graham's question?
And then on the previous page, 82, further down, like number 13, I think it is? Both of those are okay to approve? That's not the one we discussed last month?
It is not, Dr. Graham.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Pam?
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Mr. Uxser.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahara.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Fierro.
Aye.
Item 3.6, Information Items, No Action Is Required. Item 4.1, Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval of an Amendment to the Two-Year Software Maintenance Support Contract with Illusion Higher Education for the Banner Enterprise Resource Planning ERP System from Texas A&amp;M University in an increased amount not to exceed $34,115.
Move to approve 4.1 and 4.2?
Second.
Item 4.2, Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval to Purchase Copy Paper from Veritiv Company for the Instructional Service Centers and Academic Computing Services Labs for Fiscal Year 2018-2019 in an amount not to exceed $140,000.
Any questions?
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Mr. Uxser.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahara.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Fierro.
Aye.
Item 4.3, Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval of a Contract Renewal with Innovative Interfaces Incorporated for the Annual Maintenance of Sierra, which integrates all the college library services, in the amount of $67,510.
Move to approve 4.3 and 4.4.
Second.
Item 4.4, Consideration and Deliberation on the Acceptance of the Certified Appraisal Role Prepared by the Central Appraisal District. And I believe I have an order here that Ms. Shaughnessy has asked that I read. This is an order accepting the certified appraisal role, whereas the Board of Trustees of said district desire that the appraisal role for the district for the 2018 tax year be accepted and approved. Therefore, be it ordered by the Board of Trustees of the El Paso County Community College District that the appraisal role for the district for 2018 tax year be accepted as approved by the 2018 Appraisal Review Board and certified by the Chief Appraiser as follows. Net taxable value, $43,688,818.
Any questions? Pam, we're ready?
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Mr. Uxser.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahara.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Fierro.
Aye.
Item 4.5, Consideration and Deliberation on the Adoption of the 2018-2019 Operating Budget of $145,432,869.
Move to approve 4.5 and 4.6?
Second.
Item 4.6, Consideration and Deliberation on the Adoption of the 2018-2019 Auxiliary Fund Budget.
Questions? Pam, we're ready?
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Mr. Uxser.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahara.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Fierro.
Aye.
Item 4.7, Consideration and Deliberation on the Adoption of the Order and the Certificate of Order Setting the Tax Rate of .140273 dollars per $100 valuation for fiscal year 2018-2019. And I also have another order that Ms. Shaughnessy would like to read.
She's giving lots of orders today.
Order setting the tax rate, whereas the Board of Trustees of said district has received, accepted, and approved the certified appraisal role for the 2018 tax year, and whereas the district has calculated those tax rates and made such other calculations as required by law, and whereas the Board of Trustees of said district wishes to adopt a tax rate, therefore be it ordered by the Board of Trustees of the El Paso County Community College District that the maintenance and operation tax rate for the district for the 2018 tax year be set and adopted in accordance with Chapter 26 of the Texas Tax Code entitled The Property Tax Code as follows. Operations Tax Rate, .140273 dollars per $100 valuation. Total, .140273 dollars per $100 valuation.
Move to approve?
Second.
Questions? Thank you, Pam, we're ready?
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Mr. Uxser.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahara.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Fierro.
Aye.
Item 5.1, Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval of Expenditures with Various Vendors to Purchase Building Materials, Supplies, and/or Services as Needed for the District for Fiscal Year 2018-2019.
Move to approve?
Second.
Questions? Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Mr. Uxser.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahara.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Fierro.
Aye.
Item 6.1, Consideration and Deliberation on the Acceptance Agreements with Dr. Juan Fitz, Dr. Jose Crespo, and Dr. Russell Baker to Serve as Volunteers for the Emergency Medical Services Program. Move to approve?
Second.
Questions? Nope. Thank you for being here, Ms. Ayu. Pam, we're ready?
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Mr. Uxser.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahara.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Fierro.
Aye.
Item 7.0, Student Services, None. Item 8.0, Community Services, None. 8.0, Community Services, None. 9.0, Unfinished Business.
Can I ask a question on unfinished business, Dr. Serrata? I had requested information on the counselors and the staff and a report. I know it's on page 14. If we could follow up on that sometime?
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely. Pam, would you please, we don't have executive, would you please note that our next meeting is scheduled for September 20th, starting at 4:00 p.m. with a Facility and Finance Committee meeting, followed by the board meeting at 5:30? Motion to adjourn?
So me? All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned.